Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to thank you all for being the city council here tonight on August nineteenth. And I would like to call this meeting to order and call on Ward Three for implication.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to ask the mayor and the council to give me a little latitude. I made acquaintance of some folks that are small business owners. They've moved into Ward Three. Very proud of them. And it is Celia Garcia Rodriguez and her husband, Jose. And they have a restaurant, El Rincon, a Mexican restaurant up on Main Street. And I can testify after having eaten there that it's very delicious. So it's good. I asked also, as I got to know them, Ms. Rodriguez is studying, she's in her third year at her Spanish-speaking Assemblies of God Church in Nashville for ministerial studies as well. And so I asked if she would come. I asked her and her husband to come, but all of us people who are either raised by entrepreneurs or are entrepreneurs know somebody has to watch the store, right? So he's not here tonight. But I asked Ms. Rodriguez if she would to come and lead us in prayer tonight. And so would you welcome Celia Garcia Rodriguez tonight to come? Just come on up, if you will, to the microphone. And you're welcome to greet the mayor and the council and everyone if you'd like.
Thanks to everybody. I was trying to introduce myself, but I think Pastor Donna, he already did very well. Thank you so much. I'm Mexican. I'm the sister Celia. And as he says, I am part of the Assemblies of God in Nashville, Tennessee. So what I would like to do a prayer, I'm going to do first in Spanish.
Yeah, so I don't want to interrupt her, but I, you know, we have coming up, and I forgot to mention this, Hispanic Heritage Month coming up in September. So I think it's an important part. This is just a piece of that puzzle. So thank you.
Santo Padre Amado celestial, te queremos dar gracias señor mío por esta tarde, por tu presencia señor mío, porque oramos señor y te damos las gracias señor por cada vida que está aquí, por cada uno de nosotros señor, te damos la gloria señor santo padre, porque solo tú la mereces señor, solo tú eres digno señor. Tenemos una petición señor, en especial en esta noche señor, porque seas tú señor santo padre amado guiando este concilio señor para tomar decisiones señor. Oramos señor porque tú des entendimiento y conocimiento señor que procede de ti señor, para que cada decisión señor padre amado que se ha tomado en este concilio señor sea para bendición del pueblo de Hopkinsville. Oramos señor mío porque seas tú señor dando la claridad señor para dar y tomar cada decisión señor. Que si señor algo hay difícil señor mío, seas tú señor haciéndolos caminar por fe señor y no por vista señor. Oramos señor mío por sus familias, por sus vidas, por su salud señor padre amado, porque así como los trajiste con bien señor santo padre amado, ora tu presencia señor porque seas tú señor devolviéndolos con bien hacia sus hogares. Ponemos en tus manos señor este este meeting, este concilio señor, porque tú eres el mejor señor para guiar señor, para dar el entendimiento mi Dios. Reprendo todo ataque del enemigo señor que pueda poner cizaña en este lugar, en el nombre de Jesús. Amén.
Amen.
Okay, second thing, and very important, I want to read a Bible verse to all of you that it says like this, "Trust in the Lord in all of your heart and lean not on your own understanding. In all your always knowledge him and he shall direct your paths. Do not be at wise in your own eyes. Fear the Lord and depart from evil. It will be hell to your flesh and strange to your bones." Okay? I want to glorify God, God, because I want to give you all the glory, because you're worth it, because you deserve it. You're the only one who can give us strength. I have a special petition in the name of Jesus' name for this conceal. I want God that you can provide them guide for any decision that is going to be taken on this place tonight.
Amen.
Because the conceal needs the wisdom that comes from you and the direction in every single path that is going to be taken on this place and the clarity, God. Clarify all their minds, even though when they don't see the final line, please, God, make them walk by faith, not by sight. Give them guidance that comes from you to make always the best for the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky. I pray that they can feel your presence in this place, in this moment, in this meeting. I pray for them, for this conceal, that they can grow as a team, as a family, as daughters, as your sons. I pray for their health. They can have a really good health. I pray for their family. I pray for all necessity that they might have, that it can be pray and you listens to all of us. Protect them from the enemy, from any attack, from the enemy in Jesus' name. I put this concealed meeting in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Amen. Let's stand together. Thank you.
Stand for the pledge, please. Thank you, ma'am.
I plead the allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands. Well mentioned, I pray God in the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Righty, moving on down there, we got clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Smith.
Present.
Councilmember Stallins, here. Councilmember Marsh.
Here.
Councilmember Crabtree.
Here.
Councilmember Craig.
Here.
Councilmember Martin.
Here.
Councilmember Sumner.
Here.
Councilmember Meek.
Here.
Councilmember Bogard.
Present.
Councilmember Velez.
Here.
Councilmember Bell.
Here.
Councilmember Gerald.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Righty. We'll slide on down. There's no awards and recognition tonight. We'll slide into public comments right here. If anyone would like to come and speak at the podium, please state your name and address for us.
Good afternoon. I'm Diane Fromon Turner, and I am representing Jeffers Ben Environmental Center and also Focus Twenty First Century. The first thing, we have our third hummingbird festival coming up on Saturday, August the twenty-third, from nine to noon. You have a flower in front of you. If you have time, there's a lot of activities going on on Saturday. So if you have time, come on out and visit with us. This is our free event, our one free event that we do during the year. So come out to visit with us on Saturday from nine to noon at Jeffers Ben Environmental Center. And there are hummingbirds out there. They've been flying around. I've seen them. So just come on out. And then on September the ninth, on Tuesday, September the ninth, from six to eight o'clock, we're going to have a public forum on health care. This is being sponsored, and you see all the sponsors on the bottom, but this is put together by Focus Twenty First Century and Pinnaraw RC and D Area Council. And then you have a lot of sponsors with that. I gave you a letter with the speakers and the information that they're going to talk about. And we will have some light refreshments from five to five fifteen. And then we're going to have a proclamation for Nature Fest at five fifty-five that afternoon. So invite all the council members, if you can, come on out to that event on September the ninth, from six to eight at Virginia Street Baptist Church. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else like to speak? Please speak for them.
My name is Chico Ware from Hopkinsville, Kentucky. My residence is one oh three Clay Street, Lake Hesse Clay. They were talking about Shirley Jefferson Ben. I was born in Mac, I wasn't born in Mac Calf Lane. My grandmother was in Mac Calf Lane for Shirley Jefferson Ben. She don't get recognized, been a Republican, went through about ten loggers, couldn't get a telephone pole for Lake Twisted. But they talked about Ms. Jefferson being Democratic, being the mayor of Hopkinsville years ago. And my grandmother was first before she come along. And I think I made enough to back of the land before I get her and that I be recognized, my grandmother.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak? Come right on up to the podium.
Hello, everybody. My name is Sarah Edwards, and I'm with the U.S. Public or Small Business Administration. I'm currently located at five twenty Wall Street in Bowling Green, Kentucky. But I just found out that my great-grandmother was actually born in Madisonville. So I'm really happy to be back in Kentucky. I'm here to let everybody know about our disaster loan program. We're offering disaster loans for anybody who might have been impacted by the storms that happened in May. That's five hundred dollars for small businesses, nonprofits, and even homeowners who might have suffered any structural damage. Also, one hundred thousand dollars up to that amount for anybody who might have suffered any property loss. That includes cars or any sort of property that might have been lost in the last, in the storms in May. We also are offering economic injury disaster loans with a deadline that's up to July the twenty-third. So anybody who might have suffered any economic damage, meaning revenue loss due to anybody in the area who suffered any structural damage and weren't, and they weren't able to, you know, go to your business, you can get up to a million dollars for that. If you're at all interested in this loan, the deadline for the structural loan, that's the five hundred thousand dollar loan, is August the twenty-second. So we're really encouraging everybody to sign up. We have a webinar tomorrow, that's Wednesday, at eleven a.m. east or central standard time for all public officials who are interested in learning about this loan program. So I encourage everybody here to attend that. If you're interested at all, you can definitely come up to me after this meeting and reach out. Or you can go to our website, that's www.sba.gov/disaster, and you can apply there. We also have a disaster resource center that's located in Calhoun, Kentucky, if anybody wants to go in person to learn more about our loan. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Can we speak with you afterwards and get the information?
Yeah.
We'll put it online tonight.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Good evening. I'm Betty Howard. I live at thirty-two eighteen Circle Drive. And I've known, I know a lot of you, a lot of you I don't. So this is a real treat to me. And I'd much rather be here than sitting where you're sitting. You have a big responsibility. I've lived in Hopkinsville fifty-five years. And I'm not in my comfort zone speaking to you from here, but tonight I'm going to pull myself into it. Learned in my old age, it's okay to say what I think, and you're going to hear it. And as much as I could make it polished. I'm here to plead my case for curbside recycling. And for many years, I piled the bed of my pickup truck full of bags. I sat in the back of it or put a kid in the back and we went to a dumpster and emptied it out. I did this more times than I want to remember. But I was glad to have the dumpsters located around the city. When we got curbside recycling, I thought, we're like the big cities now. My children all have curbside recycling. Why couldn't we? Katie's has it. Or they have recycling because we're going to have to take ours theirs if you all choose to do away with this. But I was thrilled when we had curbside recycling. I thought, we're uptown. When I found out this might be repealed, I was disappointed, of course, and almost really crushed about it. But I found out this morning, I had a chance to come to you and make an appeal because tonight would be your second and final vote. And it's my fault as a citizen that I didn't appear at the first meeting when you had the first vote and talked about this. I strongly oppose the repealing of the curbside program. And I kindly ask the council to please slow the momentum down, to delay your vote until more facts and information can be gathered from residents, from the solid waste management, from people who are concerned. And I would also like to ask my councilman, Clayton Sumner, to, and I'd like to ask all of you, to take the lead and approach members in your ward and find out what they think about this and find out how they feel. I had a text on social media this afternoon, and I got several suggestions as to things we could do. And a couple of them made really good sense. So that worked. An open records response this morning said that households for three dollars per family per household, if we did this, that the curbside recycling could be financially viable. So you might think about that tonight. And I said earlier, at my age, I feel compelled to speak up for what I believe in. And I don't have a lot of time left, but I want to make the future brighter for Hopkinsville and for the generations of families that are going to come in back with me. I chose to stay here after my husband died three years ago. And we moved here in nineteen seventy, seventy, for him to begin a pediatric practice. And he touched many lives here. So we have a big community of friends and his former patients. And the love that has been shown to him and to me and my family has been remarkable. So to me, I wasn't raised in Hopkinsville. I wasn't born here. And I was told that if you lived here for sixteen years, you could say you were from Hopkinsville. So I have succeeded that fifteen, sixteen years, and I've been here fifty-five, and I hope to be here many more. But I chose to stay here in my home, rather than to move to where one of my four children reside. And I chose it because it's home and because I love Hopkinsville. That being said, I want to thank you all for giving your time to make us a better community. And Mayor Knight, whom I've known since he was a little boy, and I'd like to thank you for doing a great job in leading our city. And I have nothing bad to say about it. But thank you very much for hearing me tonight.
Anyone else like to speak at the podium tonight in public comments?
Thank you, Mayor. He's doing a good job for Hopkinsville. We all need to stick together.
Thank you, Chico. All righty, all righty. We're moving right along into mayor's comments, item seven. On the, we had a great time for the Relay for Life at the proclamation tonight. We had a great crowd at the Butterfryer Release over at the Justice Center. We had a good crowd there, and we appreciate everyone there. And let's not forget about the cancer relay for life. It touches everyone. We need to work on it every day. And we have the Relay for Life out at the Porchplex this weekend. So please come out and enjoy that. Saturday's the Boulevard Bash from ten to two, Rule King. Come visit us and all the businesses down the Boulevard, down the Boulevard. Saturday, we have the downtown entertainment district grand opening and ribbon cutting at four o'clock here at City Hall. And the visitor center has a lot going on, and the scavenger hunt, and over forty teams are participating in it. And y'all, if, when you leave here, look for Gary the Gobbler, our little aliens here. It just, when you walk outside, look around, see if you can find him. He's floating around up there. So he's there. But y'all, get out and enjoy the fest. The, them over, Amy and them have done a great job with this. We really appreciate that at the visitor center. Hop Town After Dark is a city event that's going on on August the thirtieth. Councilman Smith has been a huge supporter in me on this. He's really helped me push this through. I'm really happy for that. Him and Toby and the rest of the crew have really been working hard on how we're getting this going together. So on the thirtieth, come out, enjoy the music, enjoy the entertainment with us, and have a lot of fun at the Hop Town Dark. Don't forget Labor Day. Be safe. Everyone enjoy theirselves. Enjoy your family and keep that moving forward and enjoy yourself. Keep an eye on the social media. We got a Hopkinsville three-one-one app coming on. Got a lot of that coming on. We got the Doggy Dip at Tiebreaker Family Aquatic Centers on the ninth of, on nine-six. And we got the Trail of Tears Powell on nine-six through nine-seven out of Trail of Tears Park. And let's don't forget the Summer Shavuot, nine-twelve through nine-thirteen. Headliner is Eastern Corbin. The Parks and Recs crew are doing a great job with that and Public Works, and I'm, my hat's off to them on that. We appreciate that. We will move into item nine now, approval of minutes on this. Motion.
Second.
Our motion is second for the August fifth meeting. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? What? No, there's no reports or anything on that. I'm moving on. Sorry about that. There was none, so I skipped over that, Clayton. I'm sorry. All righty. Item ten is ordinances. Ordinance twenty-one dash twenty twenty-five, MediaCom franchise agreement, second reading.
An ordinance governing a limited cable television provider franchise to MediaCom Southeast LLC MediaCom for the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky, and authorizing the mayor to sign a ten-year franchise agreement with MediaCom. Whereas MediaCom is duly authorized holder of a limited cable franchise set forth in ordinance O two two thousand and seven, authorizing MediaCom to provide service in the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky, and to maintain a cable system therein. And whereas the city has determined that it is in the interest of the city and its residents for MediaCom to continue to operate the limited cable system and provide cable service and such other services as permitted by applicable law. And whereas pursuant to its powers under sections one sixty-three and one sixty-four of the Kentucky Constitution, Hopkinsville City Council may create and renew franchises for cable television systems. And whereas the city and MediaCom agree to enter into the following franchise under Kentucky law. And whereas Hopkinsville City Council has determined that MediaCom has substantially complied with the material terms of ordinance O two two thousand and seven, and with applicable law, that the quality of MediaCom service, including signal quality, response to consumer complaints and billing practices, has been and will continue to be reasonable in the light of community needs, and that MediaCom has the financial, legal, and technical ability to provide the service, facilities, and equipment to provide cable in the city. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city council of the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky as follows. Section one, A, the city of Hopkinsville grants into MediaCom a ten-year limited cable television franchise under the provisions of ordinance number O two two thousand and seven. A copy of the franchise agreement is attached hereto as exhibit A and incorporated herein. B, the franchise agreement shall expire on August thirtieth, twenty thirty-five. C, pursuant to the franchise agreement, MediaCom does hereby bond itself, its successors, and assons to faithfully and fully perform each and every condition of said franchise as memorialized in the franchise agreement, and further to faithfully perform all acts required of it pursuant to said franchise. D, the franchise agreement memorializes the agreement between the parties contained and embodied in ordinance number O two two thousand and seven, and shall be binding upon and in urdo to the benefit of the respective successors and interest of the parties hereto. E, that the mayor is hereby authorized to sign the franchise agreement, which memorializes the award by the city of Hopkinsville to MediaCom of said franchise subject to the terms and conditions reflected in ordinance number O two two thousand and seven in this ordinance. Section two, ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section three, if any section, sentence, clause, or phrase of this ordinance is held to be unconstitutional or otherwise invalid, such information shall not affect the validity of the remainder of this ordinance. Section four, the statements set forth in the preamble to this ordinance are hereby incorporated in this ordinance by reference, the same as if set forth at length herein. Section five, this ordinance shall take effect after its passage and publication according to law.
Motion, McQuaid, second to say. All righty, any discussion? Clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Meek.
Yes.
Councilmember Bogard.
Yes.
Councilmember Velez.
Yes.
Councilmember Bell.
Yes.
Councilmember Gerald.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Stallins.
Yes.
Councilmember Marsh.
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilmember Craig.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Councilmember Sumner.
Yes.
That passes on second reading.
All right. Item B, ordinance twenty-two dash twenty twenty-five, FY twenty-five, twenty-six capital budget, a second reading.
Admitting the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky, annual capital equipment and property replacement budget for fiscal year July one, two thousand and twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, by estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city council of the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky, as follows. Section one, that section one of ordinance eighteen twenty twenty-five, adopting the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six capital equipment and property replacement budgets hereby amended as follows. Revenue, transfer from general fund, capital fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, two million, three hundred and ten thousand, seven seventy-one. Transfer from general fund wins, additional insurance premium, three hundred and ninety thousand, seven thirty-seven. Transfer from ARPA Fund, four hundred and forty thousand. Transfer from grant matching fund, ninety-five thousand. Capital equipment replacement fund, three hundred and forty thousand. Total capital revenues, three million, five hundred and seventy-six thousand, five oh eight. Expenses, information technology, one hundred and ninety thousand. Police department, five hundred and seventy-five thousand, five forty-one. Fire department, three hundred and fifty thousand. City maintenance, three hundred and sixty thousand. Fort cable contracts, twenty-two thousand. Parks and Recreation, seventy thousand. Buildings and properties, one million, fifty thousand. Transfer to MRA, five hundred and eighty-three thousand, nine sixty-seven. Transfer to trust, three hundred and seventy-five thousand. Total capital expenses, three million, five hundred and seventy-six thousand, five oh eight. Surplus deficit, zero. Section two, if any section, subsection, sentence, clause, or phrase of this ordinance is for any reason held unconstitutional or otherwise invalid, such information shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. Section three, any and all existing ordinances inconsistent with this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section four, this ordinance shall take effect after its passage and publication according to law.
Motion. Second by Brittany. Any discussion? Okay, call the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Meek.
Yes.
Councilmember Bogard.
Yes.
Councilmember Velez.
Yes.
Councilmember Bell.
Yes.
Councilmember Gerald.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Stallins.
Yes.
Councilmember Marsh.
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilmember Craig.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Councilmember Sumner.
Yes.
Passes on second reading.
All righty. Item C, ordinance twenty-three dash twenty twenty-five, repeal of nine, ninety-three point oh six, curbside recycling, second reading.
Mayor, before this is read, I got, I'm going to make a motion. I'm going to make a motion. We defer the second reading on this item for sixty days to get true numbers on membership cost and a plan going forward to save the program, such as price increases or making the program mandatory, also to include public input on their willingness to increase those prices and, and/or that mandatory participation.
Motion on the floor.
Second.
Can we, do we ask questions first, or?
Yep.
Which way do I need to do it?
Second.
Okay. We got a second. And we have a second. Now discussion.
I guess I was just wanting Travis to say some of that again. Are we talking about making a motion in order to make it mandatory? I misunderstood some of which.
Well, just to get some input from the public on whether or not to be mandatory, if that's an option, or if raising rates are an option as well. I know we've heard a lot of, we've heard everything negative about.
or if raising rates are an option as well. I know we've heard a lot of, we've heard everything negative about the program, but we haven't heard anything as to what could fix it. So that's all I'm asking for, is just some time to come up with a plan to bring to us and say, we need to raise the rates, we need to make it mandatory, or a third option is we can't make it happen. So I'm just asking for a pause to slow down.
Is there a number associated with what that might cost us by doing that, or we could? I don't know who we need to.
Melissa? If not, we can go to Ms. Durden or Mr. Lynch, you know.
My first comment is if you put a pause for sixty days, the city of Hopkinsville will have to foot the bill because Hopkinsville Solid Waste cannot afford to foot the bill for sixty days. The deficit last year was two seventy-eight, so I would divide that monthly and figure out what that cost is. I did not bring that with me. I'm gonna bring my calculator up here. Two seventy-eight divided by twelve.
About twenty thousand. So about twenty thousand.
About twenty, twenty-two thousand, I believe.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three a month. So about fifty thousand.
I have one question. That's for Wendell. Dean, weren't you doing a ninety-day wind down period at the last session? If we approve this? Is that what you said?
Yes.
So are you covering the ninety-day wind down, or is it a city?
We funded it through the first fiscal quarter this year.
So the sixty-day window, which will be good without paying for, us paying for it?
We were running the same two deficits for that. So yeah, September thirtieth, we have funded the deficit.
So thirty days are covered.
But we would have to.
Can you have us something by September thirtieth, like some sort of plan or recommendation? I know your recommendation is to scrap it, but I'm just asking for.
I want, yeah. Man, I don't know if our presentation from a month ago is still in your system or not. Yes, it is. If it can be pulled up. We did present options. We did extensive research. And if y'all may recall, we provided you with some real numbers on over the life of it, what it has, what the net result was. Roll one more.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, these were some possible options that we put out there that you all considered at the committee of the whole meeting. So of course, the one that you selected was to go ahead and wind it down, but there's some hesitance to that. As a board, we are, we're at your wheel. We will do what you want. But as Melissa said, CFO, you have to fund it beyond September thirtieth. You know, our primary objective is the standard waste materials of city of Hopkinsville. That's our goal. That's what we do best. We're really, really good at it. Recycling has never been a winner for us. We think it's a really good idea. There's just no way to make it work financially. So you can study it. It's gonna be, there's no way to make it work unless you make it mandatory. But beyond September the thirtieth, the city would have to foot the bill. And I just hope that will be part of any approval tonight because we don't have the funds.
Travis, what if we table it for thirty instead of sixty?
I was saying, something by the end of September, like the sooner the better. I mean, we just approved that pilot program, skipping that pilot program for a year as well. So there's four hundred thousand that, I know.
That money is here.
I know, but before you came in here, you didn't have it. So, right. So I'm just saying, pump the brakes. Let's try to figure something out. There's, I mean, there's people that are highly upset, and I know as a business, monetarily, it doesn't make sense.
And we're willing to continue the program on as it is right now. But I mean, it would be, it would mean the city would have to rewrite.
And the membership is not, is not great as well. So the question I have, within the last year, what has, has there anything been done to grow that membership, other than a Facebook post here and there?
Uh.
Cause I don't.
We have not done anything that has negatively impacted the membership. The rate has been kept at a unrealistically low.
And I agree with, I agree with that. It's unrealistic.
And it's very unrealistic. Melissa has done some research on what it would take if you just took the current base of participants and raised the rate and let them carry the load. I think you can share that information, how much that would be. It may run off a lot of people, but that number has been, I think that was.
Thirty-two fifties.
Thirty-two fifties with that, what I got from Brian this morning.
But has that number been put out to the public?
No.
There's been no, that's what I'm saying. There's been no public feedback on this, so we haven't got the public's. I'm not being, they might be willing to do it, they might not. I don't know if I'm willing to pay that much, but.
We got one thousand eighty-two people that signed up for that, I believe, is what was on that paper. Five dollars and fifty cents doesn't cut it?
It doesn't.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to make a comment. So I was on the council when this was passed, and there was nobody that was more in favor of recycling than this girl. I was excited about it, I mean, really, and sharing it with everybody, but we have to look at the numbers here. It's terrible. And I think what has happened is the public has not gotten this information we have in front of us. I think it's just bad communication because I completely agree with you, Ms. Betty, that I want to do this. But the reality is, we are losing two hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars a year. It's absolutely not sustainable. And so doing, pausing for thirty days is not going to change this. And so I appreciate what you're trying to do, Travis, but my personal opinion is, we can't do it. We just can't do it. And I don't think thirty days is going to change anything. So going forward, somehow, as a city, we have failed at getting this information out because I think the public felt blindsided with recycling and not understanding, well, why in the world are we suddenly stopping it? This is why. But when we originally did this, we were never planning to make money, ever. The plan was to break even. And I can't remember, Melissa, do you remember what the numbers were of how many customers we needed to break even? Anyway, in my brain at the time, I thought surely we can get enough customers to break even. One thousand eighty-two is not cutting it. We just don't have the public support. So according to this paper in front of us, there are ten thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two customers that are not recycling, and only one thousand and eighty-two are recycling. The numbers are just not there, and thirty days is not going to change anything. So that's just my opinion. And I mean, I just wanted to share that because I've been through this whole process. And unfortunately, I think we have not been transparent enough about why we're voting, or at least why we're having this discussion to stop recycling. So I wanted to share that.
But could thirty days give us the time? I mean, either way, you know, he said, September thirtieth, that's it. And I'm not for, I'm not for the city having to fund it by any means, but I'm also not for the other option, which is ending it without resolution.
But what's thirty days gonna do, though?
Give us time to get feedback. Are they okay with, are they okay with raising the price? Or just to see, can we spread more word and get more feedback on who might participate or who can commit to participate?
Either participate or it's going away.
Well, we had this discussion earlier a year ago.
I have a question.
Excuse me, hold on, slow down. Hold on. Brittany, then we'll go to Van.
Can we bring in a private organization to take control of this?
I assume that's directed to me. That, I'm sure that's possible. That's going to require an ordinance amendment. And what I would recommend, if that's something council wants to do, we would need input from the enterprise, from the board, and then with their legal counsel, and obviously do some research. But I think that's obviously a, an option.
It'll cost more, too.
It'll cost more.
Oh, no, that's where I was going because what Mr. Lynch was saying, basically, they can study for thirty days, but it's not going to work unless they mandate it to everybody. It's either we mandate it to everyone, or we go up to the thousand eighty-two people there, the thirty-two dollars and fifty cents of a can.
Assuming they won't drop.
Assuming they don't drop. Travis?
So it was said earlier today that Solid Waste no longer has the funds to run this program at a loss, and I totally agree with that. Like, it can't happen anymore. And it was said, if the program was to continue, it would have to be funded or run in a different way. But there couldn't be a truer statement there. And I'm just asking for a pause. Don't pull the plug on the entire program. Let's look at everything, see if we can figure this out. If not, then we tried. So, but all we've heard is what's wrong, what's it losing, but we've never heard any results or ways to fix it. That's just what I'm saying.
That's where I'm at as well.
Again, we serve at your wishes. It's gonna have to be funded, other than from resources within Solid Waste. And we've already done our research. We presented that in a report we gave last month. But we're happy if you all form a committee to study this. We're happy for representatives from our board to be available, and our general manager to be consultants on that committee. But we've studied this for twelve years, and we gave you the results. And quite frankly, it's a loser. I've recycled from the very beginning. I believe in green. But I'm also a realist. I have a financial background, and it doesn't cash flow with ten percent supporting a hundred percent.
I agree.
Councilmember Marvin, we do advertise this program regularly on WHOP. The city buys our time. It's in our budget.
The reality is, it's not a thirty-day window. It's really, it's gotta be done by Thursday for committee of the whole to get two votes in before September thirtieth.
Before we have to foot the bill, is what I'm saying.
So, I mean, you're saying twenty-five thousand dollars a month, and we need two months. I mean, what's, I mean, it's a lot of money, yes, but we spend, we spend more money on stupider things than that. Sorry.
Taxpayer dollars.
We just, yeah, taxpayer dollars. We bought a lot over here. We're gonna tear down a building. It's gonna cost us a million dollars, but we can't spend fifty thousand to try to fix this program?
Yeah, but we've already spent two point three million.
And it was mismanaged from the get-go.
Well, that may be possible.
Well, we didn't do that, and the taxpayers didn't either, Travis.
We didn't do that. No, it was mismanaged. There's a federal investigation out there.
Any more discussion on this?
Yeah, I'm gonna say.
Travis, Clay.
And when I look at my ward, Ms. Howard, I can ride around, all I have to do is look at the bins. And the majority of our ward, especially in the part I live in, have a red bin out there, including myself, who never thought I would, but I did. The only thing I see here that would ever work would be an outsourced to a third party, which I think is something you asked about, which is actually one of your options on here. I guess my question is, what would that look like? Do you, you say that is one of your options on here. What would that look like if that went into place?
So actually, the city of Bowling Green outsources to a third party. They come in and they contract with the residents individually. The residents pay the third party. We have to change our ordinance because right now, we have everything on lockdown inside the city. Nobody's allowed in except for our current people. So we need an ordinance change. And then we would, we can reach out to the same third party that Bowling Green has and have them come in and do a study and like contact people. They would, they do it for profit, so it's definitely gonna cost more. But they would come in and they would handle everything, and they would contract with the people individually who wanted to have recycling.
Am I understanding it right? There is a possible win-win solution here that keeps Solid Waste from having to pay because this wouldn't cost you all anything, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And this would still allow our citizens who really want this, an opportunity to have it?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, so I'm, hold on. So in that ordinance, and Doug, maybe this is a question for you because I have not read it recently. We still charge them for going across our scales if they come in here and do business with us?
Those are discussions that we would have to have when we get a recommendation from Solid Waste on amending the ordinance. Then how do you want that ordinance to read? Do you want to charge permit fee, a franchise fee, whatever it may be? But there's a lot of different options, and what I would recommend, if that's the direction councils go on, that we do some research, looking at other municipalities, see how successful those programs have been, and give you some examples. But it would look far different than the ordinance that you're deciding whether or not to repeal today. But we would get rid of this, and then it would be a separate amendment because now you have a provision in your ordinance where all of the recyclables are owned actually by the city. So the city would have to give those up to a third party. So we would have to amend that.
Currently, with a lot of services you all have, even if people are taking their stuff somewhere else, they still go across our scales, correct? We still collect money if they take it to another dump. They're going across our scales.
I'll let our general manager figure that.
What are you referring to? Like, as far as recycling materials?
Any materials.
Yes, as far as, is anything that's generated within the city has to come over?
Still goes through our scales, even if it's going to a dump somewhere else. Okay.
Exactly.
That's what I was trying to figure out. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So I think, for me at least, I can't get behind in good conscience and say, I want to spend two hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars a year losing, in a losing program for anything, at least for this. They've shown year after year. Now, my opinion is, it was never set up to succeed. It was set up to fail from day one. I was not a council member when that started. I was a police chief who sat back here and listened to conversations. And the entity at the time did not want it to succeed. Had that conversation many a times. And I don't mind telling everybody in the public, that was the conversation. They did not want to succeed. It was forced down their throat to do it. They told us from day one, it would fail. It was a losing battle.
Been a nuisance.
But we are where we are now. What I would like to say is, I'm not, I'm not good with putting it on pause necessarily because it's gonna cost the city money to just funnel into a sinking hole because it's not set up right to succeed. But what I want to do is make sure that we put on business list, or what we have to do to get this third party thing in here because I still want my citizens that want this to have the opportunity. If they come to me, Ms. Howard, and they say, it's gonna cost you thirty dollars a month for you to have this service, if they want to say yes, let them say yes. By all means, at least then, as a city, we're still offering that, that option, and it's not draining us at the same time. I will tell you upfront, for thirty-five dollars a month, I will not be throwing mine in there. But I had phone calls from people that said they'd be more than happy to do so. And I just want to make sure that if we, if we end it, we end it, whether we do it now, thirty days. But I want to make sure that we do something with this third party and let them come in and decide. Let them, let them talk to the citizens. We could easily hand them the thousand eighty-two citizens' addresses and let them start there. And then anybody else that comes in, we can let them contact them. And we could maybe set up something where people could still call here or call them, whoever we do, to put in contact. So that's kind of my stance on it all.
And Councilmember Sumner, they've got a pretty interesting system down in Bowling Green, the way they handle their recycling program down there. It's kind of based off of Uber. So we'd also be putting jobs back into our own community. These would be our own people that are, that are going out there and picking up those recyclables that everybody's generating. And while the cost would probably be more than what they're currently paying now, it wouldn't be as significant as what it would take for us to break even, nowhere near that.
That's good to know. Thank you.
I feel like this is a plausible solution. I mean, I was not willing to absolutely, after hearing many of concerns, to just definitively say, no, we're done. I think this is a plausible solution, especially if they're saying it would be less than the thirty-two fifty.
Well, I guess, Mayor, Doug, I guess, if the council wants, I don't know if we still have to go with the motion. I know we have to do it in a minute. But how do we make this to assure that the ball doesn't get dropped on the outsourcing third party?
Well, no, we have to make sure this happens by September thirtieth, so we know what we're gonna tell their board and who's paying the bill.
No, no, let me rephrase what I'm saying. I'm saying it ends September thirtieth, as planned. But we need something, whatever we have to do as a council, to say that it, that we want you all, or we want whoever, in the next week, you start this contact with this third party, to get them in here, to our city, to start seeing what it's gonna cost the thousand eighty-two customers that may want this service outsourced. How do we make sure that happens in a timely manner? So even if it ends September thirtieth, maybe they only go a month before the private person picks up and takes off, so they only lose a month of service.
Well, what we'd have to do there is we have to get the ordinance changed.
We need, number one, we need to get this on the business list. So I think there needs to be a motion to place that item on the business list, and then either go through committee of the whole or council, and we can start getting research together and present that even before those meetings.
We can start gathering information tomorrow. Do we have to deal with the other motion first, or can I make a motion to?
No, there's a motion on the floor.
Motion second on the floor.
Excuse me, there could be an amendment to that.
Motion.
Good. Thank you. Hold on.
All right. Clerk, call the roll on it.
Read it again. You don't have to tell me what it is.
This is on the pause.
This is on the pause. Travis's motion to.
Travis's motion to pause it.
For sixty or thirty days.
And, and that would be for the second, uh, meeting in October, October twenty-one.
Councilmember Meek?
Yes, to pause, no to not pause.
So, but we're, we're covering the cost and after September thirtieth.
Yes.
That's what we're voting on.
That, but technically, that's not part of the, part of the motion. The motion is just.
The motion is to pause for thirty days, right? Or sixty days.
End of September.
Okay, end of September.
Clear as mud.
Somebody's gonna have to pay for it at the end of September.
Discussion, no?
No.
Councilmember Bogard?
No.
Councilmember Velez?
No.
Councilmember Bill?
No.
Councilmember Gerald?
No.
Councilmember Smith?
No.
Councilmember Stallins?
No.
Councilmember Marsh?
No.
Councilmember Crabtree?
No.
Councilmember Craig?
No.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Councilmember Sumner? And the motion to defer until September thirtieth does not pass.
Now, we're back to ordinance twenty-three dash twenty-five. Uh, repealing of ninety-three point oh-six curbside recycling.
An ordinance repealing section ninety-three point oh-six curbside recycling of the Hopkinsville Code of Ordinances, whereas the Hopkinsville Solid Waste Enterprise Board has requested the recycling program be terminated due to low participation and financial loss. And whereas the Committee of the Whole made a favorable recommendation at their July seventeenth, twenty-twenty-five meeting to terminate the curbside recycling program. Now therefore be ordained by the City Council of the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky as follows. Section one, that section ninety-three point oh-six curbside recycling of the Hopkinsville Code of Ordinances hereby repealed in its entirety. Section two, any section subsections, and its clause or phrase of this ordinance is held unconstitutional or otherwise invalid. Such infirmity shall not affect validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. Section three, all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section four, this ordinance shall take effect September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five, after its passage and publication, according to all.
Summon. Got both of you in the same time. Alright, any more discussion? Call the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Meek?
Yes.
Councilmember Bogard?
Yes.
Councilmember Velez?
Yes.
Councilmember Bill?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerald?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Stallins?
Yes.
Councilmember Marsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree?
Yes.
Councilmember Craig?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin?
No.
Councilmember Sumner? That passes on second reading.
Righty. Going into municipal orders, item eleven, municipal order thirty-six dash twenty-twenty-five, HWA wholesale water rates, and if there's any questions, Derek Watson is here.
Upon recommendation of the Hopkinsville Water Environment Authority, Hopkinsville City Council hereby increases the wholesale water rates, which Hopkinsville Water Environment Authority shall charge to the Christian County Water District to the amount shown on the attached Exhibit One. Subject to approval of these rates by the Kentucky Public Service Commission, the PSC. The Phase One rate shall become effective for all water purchased by Christian County Water District on and after October first, twenty-twenty-five. The Phase Two rate shall become effective for all water purchased by Christian County Water District on, on and after October first, twenty-twenty-six. And the Phase Three rate shall become effective for all water purchased by Christian County Water District on and after October first, twenty-twenty-seven. Hopkinsville City Council hereby authorizes the Hopkinsville Water Environment Authority to take any and all actions necessary to obtain PSC approval of the wholesale water rates set forth in Exhibit One.
Need a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion. Amy and Brittany, um, any discussion? Ready? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Righty, moving forward on that. Derek. Uh, executive orders forty-three dash twenty-twenty-five, Hopkinsville Christian County Public Library Board of Trustees.
Effective September first, twenty-twenty-five, Kate Russell shall be reappointed to the Hopkinsville Christian County Public Library Board of Trustees. This term shall expire August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-nine, and no action is necessary.
Righty, executive order forty-four dash twenty-twenty-five, Human Rights Commission?
Effective September first, twenty-twenty-five, Julie Anna Carlisle shall be appointed to the Human Rights Commission to fill the unexpired term of Kenneth Mains. This term shall expire June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six, and there's no action necessary on this one.
Righty. Any item thirteen, any other business?
I'd like to go back to the, um, excuse me, the, uh, the curbside recycling. So the last thing that, that Mr. Willen said was that we could do away with the, uh, curbside recycling, but if we wanted to come back and study it, look at it, potentially outsource it, we would need a motion to add that to the business list. So we've talked about that. I think everybody's in favor. So I'm gonna make the motion to have that added back to the business list, uh, which would include looking at the ordinances, working with solid waste, and potentially bringing in outside contractors to explore that and see what that might look like.
Second.
We got a motion in second on that one.
Yeah.
Alright, uh, we've got a motion in a second. Any discussion on going back and looking at the curbside recycling?
The only point I'm gonna make is the business list drives me crazy because there's no real guarantee it ever sees the council floor. And I hate not putting dates on something we want to come back because I've seen stuff literally be on that business list for seven or eight years.
September, do it next month?
Yeah.
Do it next month.
So I didn't know how we do it.
Oh, well, I'm gonna ask the chairman right now, what day, when he would like to put it on.
I just wanna make sure it gets brought back quick.
We want it back in September.
Mayor.
Great.
Melissa and I worked with Brian, and we'll have it at the beginning of September.
Okay.
Thank you. Because there really is no reason why we can't have some contact or proposal from those companies at that point, is there not?
No, we can go ahead and start talking, figuring things out.
The fact that you heard all the seconds means, you know, we want.
I got told by y'all to go to work.
I have a, I have a red bin, you know, so I mean, I'm, I'm behind the program. I use the red bin. I pay for the service every single month.
Right.
But, you know, the bottom line is, it just, uh, the, these are taxpayer funds. We just can't continue.
Alright, well, we will get to work on that with Mr. Body and Melissa and, and Brian out there. We will start looking at this and with Doug, get it together for everyone.
Would it be possible to pop, maybe have an idea of rates by?
It depend on what the outside companies say. We'll have to ask them what their.
Just thinking it'd be something we could start presenting to try to get more people engaged.
Correct.
Well, I'll even do better than that. Tomorrow night at five-thirty, we meet upstairs. Everybody's welcome to join. Uh, we meet the third, third Wednesday, is that correct? Third Wednesday every month, so.
Okay, but we will get to work on that like Mr. Body and Melissa and Brian will be getting together. Yeah, we still have to vote. Alright, any more discussion before we vote? Alright, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Righty. Didn't figure I needed a roll call for that one. Okay, any more other business? Alrighty, I'm gonna go into item fourteen, councilman comments. Need more comments tonight? Alrighty, item fifteen, uh, we have to go into closed session. Economic Development Proposal, KRS sixty-one point eighty-one O one G.
Second.
Got a motion in second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, we are going into closed session now. Thank you.